By thirty? Okay. I'd like to call the City Council Committee meeting to order for Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023. Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
And we're going to start, first of all, with public safety.
I'd like to call the Public Safety Committee to order. We have one item on the agenda tonight. That is Axon Standards, and that will be presented by Chief Clerk.
Thank you very much. I'm here tonight to ask for the authority to enter into a contract with Axon for a software program called Axon Standards. We knew about Axon Standards when we went with Axon late last year. However, it wasn't up to the point where we could actually enter an agreement with them because it is a new product for them that comes with the Officer Safety Plan. There is a configuration and small additional fee that goes along with it. And just to tell you what Axon Standards is, it's software as a service where they will develop for us a variety of different forms that could be used to electronically enter information, and then we could use that information for data analytics later on. The forms would be such as use-of-force forms, vehicle pursuits, vehicle collisions, internal complaints, citizen complaints, internal affairs investigative case management, things along these lines. There are, there is the ability to add additional customized forms. Of course, that would, that would be an additional amount. The cost for this is a $15,000 implementation fee and a yearly amount of $4,276. We are not asking for any budget amendment. We do have the money within our budget through our grant sources, and so we're just looking to for the authority to move forward with this at this time.
Okay. Thank you for the order, Chief. Just before you start, I know you had opportunity to say it's weird not having Chief Clerk in the room tonight. Your wife definitely recently retired. Appreciate his years of service and look forward to the next minute of stepping into that role. I wanted to know if you could just identify any agreement that talked about how there were aspects that could potentially be outside of the scope of this project? Do you foresee any of those burdens coming up or those being issues moving forward?
You mean additional forms that would need to be created?
On page 11, the change order, it said the following are considered outside of the scope of the project. It would be a cost associated to the city, I would imagine. So I didn't know if any of those items were applicable to this project.
Okay. Now I can better answer this. No, basically what they're telling us is that we would have to manage the implementation of it on our end through our IT, and you know, our IT Administrator, Bowen Carr, has been made aware of this and sees no issues with it.
Perfect. Thank you, Chief. Any questions or comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Mary?
Chief, you want to talk about $15,000 and $4,000 yearly? Did you pay for the access license fee? That's the $40,000?
The access license fee?
The standard access license. It's showing $40,000 for $46,000.
What page is that on?
That is on page two of the 35. Performance invoice?
I mean, that's the total over the nine years.
Oh, that is total over the nine years?
Yeah, that's with the 40,000.
Okay. Just want to make sure that's not.
It's the $15,000 plus that, the $4,000 of the year going forward.
So that is if you have.
Yes.
On the next fourth page. Perfect.
Yeah, that, that's what broken down over the, I believe, eight years. And we also would have the ability to break down the $15,000 over the same eight years, but I think that we would plan on just paying that and have, keeping the cost lower, $40, $200 a year.
Yep. Thank you.
If there are any other comments? I have one final question. I didn't see in the packet speaking to when the project would start and intended end date. Would you have a timeframe in mind?
Sure. Sorry about that. We didn't put that in there. The, it's expected to be eight months from the time that we are able to sign with them. So we're expecting that once this goes through the legislative process and we're able to sign it, might be close to February, so we probably wouldn't be seeing this implemented until fall, roughly October range.
Thank you. If there are any other questions or comments?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Are there any other items to the public safety committee?
Mr. Williams.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Williams, could you call Government Operations to order?
Sure. Thank you. I would like to call Government Operations to order, and first item is request the authorization to purchase chlorine gas 2023 for the Water Department.
I don't know if I have all the pages here either. I don't have all the pages here. So I'm missing part of the packet that I have the odd pages. That still has one three as well. I don't know if it's. I don't know if I'm missing a cover page. I'll just give it a go. Let's give it a go. All right. The city put out for bid, as it does on an annual basis, requests for bids for chlorine gas. This bid was put out, or was returned on December 28th, 2022, for chlorine gas 2023. One bid was received by JCI Jones Chemicals, Inc. of Sarasota, Florida, in the amount of So this is looking for authorization to purchase the 150-pound cylinder unit to cover 365 150-pound cylinder units from JCI Jones Chemicals, Inc. for $109,500.
First item. Can I?
Do you?
First item is three, and we just have to ask questions or comments.
Mr. Williams, would you mind finishing up? He wasn't here when we started. Finishing this item and then we'll.
Finished item, okay. Any question or comment in regards to item number one?
So, do you know if this is someone who's been used before?
I don't know offhand. I don't know if the city clerk has any recollection from previous years when opening up the.
It's usually the same. They're the best? Okay.
Any other question or comment? Seeing that we have a motion.
So.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so our next item on the agenda is request authorization to purchase liquid sodium. I'm going to super pronounce that wrong. For the wastewater treatment plant.
He's not here, so I have it. So the city put out for bid, a request for bids for liquid sodium by sulfide, as it does on an annual basis, used for the treatment of wastewater in the city. On December 28th, 2022, low bid was received from Holland Company, Inc., in the amount of $74,400. The request is to authorize a purchase order to Holland Company, Inc., in the amount of $74,400 for liquid sodium by sulfide for 2023 to treat our wastewater.
So on the, on the list, the company names, I don't see the company that we're, that we're choosing on this list.
It's the first one.
Shannon Chemical?
No, Holland Company? Page five or five?
Yeah, but on this.
I don't.
Oh, you're right.
I don't know if you're missing pages on this.
No, I'm not. I missed a lot.
Well, I'm just looking at the numbers. What I have here, and this is my issue right now, is I have page 27 and then page 29. So I don't necessarily know if I'm missing pages.
This page, the page with Shannon is the next resolution. The number three on our agenda?
Oh, is that, okay.
It does seem like we're missing a couple of things.
So, looking at the documentation that we have, what I have numbered is page 29. That goes 27 to 29. Holland Company, Inc., the submitter of Adams, Massachusetts. You can see who requested. So this was put on bidnet, on bideters. Who requested the, the request for bids? They are one of them. Certainly, we can follow up. I don't know if it was in the packet to begin with, the information bid sheet that you're always looking for. I don't have it in my packet here, so I can't speak.
No, in line. I thought it was that one, but it's the next one.
If the, I can make a suggestion, a suggestion if we can, maybe if you want to take a five-minute break to see if we can print everything out.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Before we do that, I just, is this the same company Mr. Farm was talking about before? That this was pretty much the only company that, that offers this?
I believe that was for the chlorine gas because I know that is much more difficult because we use chlorine as a gas as opposed to other municipalities that use it in a different form.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, so Ms. Mike was going to print out the pages so that we should make sure that we have all the documentation as we're passing these documents. Want you to take a break?
Anybody want me to?
Nothing.
Okay. Thank you.
For the interest of saving time tonight, number five, Government Operations, is related to 1134 Albany Street. I realize that I did print out a couple of things that would be helpful to the council's consideration, so I'm just going to pass that out to you all. What's the depth of?
Okay.
So you can see where it is, and this is the pool.
Somebody in there now.
Yes. This area.
That's just that? Okay.
Yeah, it's not that. That's 1134. Say up.
How are your feelings?
So, my, my wife's from Montreal to celebrate her New Year's.
Thank you.
Was it from Voices for, yeah. So Dan brings in a better sense of, because I don't deal with the individual rules and rules. That's not what I do. And we prepare the documents to get to them to the department. And then Mr. Farm is, you know, he is where, whoever they do, the organizations. But Dan, after you told me, I spoke to Dan about it, and I said, is it the way to put out the process? And said he's going to follow up. No, because they're not contracting with them individually.
But both second and?
No, it's going to, right, they're going to be, the money's going to flow down. Not doing, you can talk to Dan.
Okay, I get it. My interest is somebody definitely needs to make that clear.
As I said, I think Dan spoke to them.
Okay.
You can chat with them after.
Okay. All right.
Not trying to be.
No, I totally get it. All right, just as long as you get the money.
They, yeah. It's not a meet.
No, I get it.
I can't answer questions, but.
Okay. Apparently what you, because it was about a contract, so now I hear what you're saying?
Yeah.
We are on agenda item number two.
All right, I think I have all the information now. So the city annually puts out a bid, a request for bid, liquid sodium by sulfide. It's used in the treatment of city wastewater. You can see who accessed the list on page 29. If you look at page 27, however, back on December 28th, 2022, the city received three bids. The low, the lowest bidder on this was Holland Company, Inc., in the amount of $74,400. There were two other bids that were received. The city's looking to move into, excuse me, issue a purchase order to Holland Company, Inc., for that amount, $74,400 for the 2023 liquid sodium oxide by sulfide.
Okay, any other questions or comments on that?
All in.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, agenda item, is a request for authorization to purchase hydrofluosilic acid for the Water Department.
All right. I'm going to say it one time. Hydrofluosilic.
Silic?
Yeah.
Super casual.
Magic. We'll go with the acid, right? Again, this is used, this is a request for bid we put out every year. This is again for the treatment of city water. It went out back, actually, request were due and were open on December 28th, 2022. You can see on number page 32, those businesses that requested the documents for the bid. When the bid was opened, there were two bidders who had submitted. The lowest bidder on this was Univar Solutions USA, Inc. of Morrisville, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $54,080. The request is for the committee to move ahead for a resolution, the authority for the mayor to issue a purchase order to Univar Solutions USA, Inc., in the amount of $54,080.
Questions or comments?
This is the same company that we always use?
I believe this is definitely the company that we used last year. I don't know about prior, like years prior to that, but I do recall this company previously.
And is this an increase over last year?
I think it is, but.
It may be an increase. We can go back and take a look at the resolution that was authorized last year to see how it compares.
So I'm pretty sure everything went up this year.
Any other questions, comments on this?
All in.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we have an important, now, item on the agenda. It's just a reminder that we are amending Chapter 183, our through the city code. Our businesses require obtaining certificates, and that's going to be held on the ninth, right after the stated city.
During council.
After stated city. So that's just a reminder that the public area need to be held. And our last item on the agenda pertains to all of you. I maybe you were mentioning something earlier about that. Mr. Andrew?
I just passed out some information that might be a bit more helpful.
Okay.
Yes.
So, Mr. Cogan?
Thank you. This is a bit of a request that doesn't typically come up. We are currently involved in a tax lane foreclosure covering, we haven't done a tax lane foreclosure since, the last time I did it was 2018 until the beginning of 2019. Then COVID happened, it delayed pursuit of the executive orders when we could do tax lane foreclosures. So we're in the middle of the tax lane foreclosure, covers years 2020, 2019, and 2018. Those are new, the first time we've done a foreclosure of those lanes. There are also some older lanes that are still, that we're still foreclosing on. One of the properties that we're foreclosing on is 1134 Albany Street. It is noted section block, section block and lot 4950-5-14. There had been a converted residence with a convenience store on the first floor and residential space on the second floor at that site until August of 2018, at which point fire ravaged the building. Due to the extensive damage from the fire and putting out the fire, the city performed an emergency demolition in September of 2018. So this happened at the, late August 2018, the fire happened. Right at the beginning of September of 2018, the city did the emergency demolition. The property has been a vacant lot since, but for, if you look in the photo, there there's like a small garage in the far back. The property is still owned by the same person who owned the property back when the fire happened, a person by the name of Nagi Sala. Lots of dimensions are 33 feet by 100 feet, so it's not buildable as of right. Has to be 40 feet wide to be buildable as of right. Somebody would have to get a variance if they wanted to build a structure there. It's currently assessed at $15,200. If you look at the chart that I provided, it shows the tax amounts that are due on the property, and it's more than just taxes. The liens also include the cost for the city to do the emergency demolition with the asbestos monitoring, et cetera. And there was also a water leak there that the city serviced. So if you look, there are some big numbers on here. In 2019, there was the non-tax lien of $11,109, and you can see all the interest that's accrued on it. And then that's the, the service leak. And then in 2020, there was municipal, MVB, a municipal voucher bill converted into a property lien. That $57,648.86 was the cost to do the demolition. An attorney reached out to my office saying, look, the brother of the owner of this property wants to buy the property because he owns the property right next door. And that property is 1132 Albany Street. So if you're looking at this picture, it's the building to the right, and he wants to essentially buy the lot from his brother. The problem is, the property's not worth what's due tax-wise now, or lien-wise, I want to say. I don't want to say tax because more than just taxes, it's these other liens as well. And the city council, and I gave you a breakdown of what those amounts are. What's owed principal tax-wise, and there are city and school taxes. The city makes the school whole, and then we are the foreclosing entity. Then, once we buy those liens, so to speak, from the school district, we would then collect anything from, from somebody making payment, right, for the school liens, and interest accrues on those liens. So there's the principal taxes, city and school. There's the interest on those taxes for the city and school. And then there's the principal on those non-tax liens, and then there's the interest on the non-tax liens. All right? So the owner of the, excuse me, the attorney who's representing this brother wants to redeem the property. He wants to pay the taxes off for his brother so that they can, well, he can buy the property by just paying the taxes off. However, when you do the math, it just doesn't make financial sense for him to do it. The city council has the ability to waive interest that's accrued for both the tax liens and also those non-tax liens. The city council can also discharge the non-tax liens, which we, the MVB for the water service and the MVB amount for the, the fire demolition. The city council cannot do anything related to the principal for the tax liens themselves. Those have to be paid. That amount would be $16,224.8. This, as I mentioned, this property is a vacant lot. I think generally the council has an idea of how much we typically sell a vacant lot for, particularly one that's not buildable. You know, I can throw a number out there, you know, maybe it's what you're thinking, somewhere in the ballpark of $2,500, maybe $5,000 for a vacant lot. $5,000 is actually a stretch, particularly when it's not buildable. If we take this in foreclosure, we would then eventually, you know, have a vacant lot available for somebody to buy, which is fine, that happens. But since this attorney reached out to me, I wanted to bring it to the city council's attention to see if the city council was inclined to discharge the two MVVs, the one related to the fire demo and the one related to the water service work that was done, and waive the interest on those liens and also the tax liens. This person would still be responsible for paying 16, the principal in taxes, which is $16,224.8 in order to redeem it.
So I, it sounds like the right fiscal decision to make. You were saying that this is something that occurs frequently, right? How many times have we done something like this?
This has, as far as I know, I can, not, not this, this has not occurred as far as I know, something like this. There was one instance, trying to think, well, there was an instance where the city council had the ability to waive, I think, some interests for, I think it was some churches at one point for not-for-profits because they didn't file the correct paperwork. And then there was also some state law that, that was years and years ago. This is remarkably different.
Yeah.
You know, I can't tell the council what to do in this. I can just present you with the offer, and I can tell you, as I said, if we sell this property, it's probably going to be in the ballpark of, you know, if we take it and then sell the lot, I would imagine the way we sell vacant lots sometimes is going to be in the ballpark of $2,500, maybe even $5,000, maybe. The taxes, the principal taxes don't go away if you get rid of the interest and get rid of, you know, the non-tax, tax lien amount. The principal would still have to be paid six, over $16,000. So, you know, I don't, I know we like, sometimes words like precedent gets thrown around. This isn't really one of those scenarios. This is very unique circumstance because there's no structure there. You know, it's just really, and it doesn't create, you know, it doesn't create anything legally that, you know, somebody's going to come back to you and say, well, you did it in this scenario. The scenario is very unique, but it's completely up to the council and how it wants to.
Thoughts?
So the brother owns 1132, the building next door?
So the person who wants to buy, but pay off the taxes, he owns 1132.
So proprietor?
I'm sorry.
He's the only one? He's the only one on this, on the deed?
Correct. So, yes, I believe he is the only one on the deed from what I saw.
Okay.
Right.
All right. So the second part is, so what would stop him from, you know, getting this and somehow transferring it back to his brother?
He could potentially do it, but he would still have to pay the $16,000 off in, like there, because all he would be doing is redeeming, all I'm asking, you know, the request is to, as I said, waive the, the interest and discharge the MVB, the two MVVs, the principal, so that the brother can then redeem the parcel, or the property owner can redeem the parcel and sell it to his brother. He still would have to come up with $16,000 and, you know, a little over $16,000. It doesn't prevent, you know, I don't. It doesn't prevent, you know, honestly, doesn't prevent the brother from keeping a vacant lot. You know, he would then have to pay taxes on it and all that. This is merely a question, you know, I understand where, you know, where you're getting at. It's merely a question of whether or not the city wants to potentially take the property in foreclosure and then sell it for less than what could be, what it would be redeemed for.
Could we negotiate with the attorney that wants it, at least recover the demolition fee and the water, since we kind of paid that out?
We could. Doesn't seem, from talking to the attorney, it's going to happen that way. You know, he reached out to me, the brother doesn't see the value in paying, you know, $68,757.86 for a lot that can't be built upon. As I said, you know, he, it just doesn't make, it doesn't make financial sense for him to do that.
The only liens that are on the property right now are the, the tax lien and the two other liens, right? There's no other liens of all of this property?
I can't speak to any other, I can only talk about the tax liens. I can't speak to a mortgage or anything like that, you know, but when we do a foreclosure, it, you know, anybody who has an interest in the property, mortgage company, judgment debtor, or judgment creditor, rather, their interest is foreclosed, because we have to provide them with notice, et cetera. Our tax liens are at the top of the list, right? We have priority over those other creditors. Does that answer the question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a follow-up, did we foreclose on this property already?
We're currently in the process of the foreclosure. Right.
So, you don't have a list of all the tax liens, all the liens against this property?
I have a list of the liens.
Our liens, yeah.
These are our liens. I don't have a list of all the other liens. I don't get that. What I get from what we do, the searching for it, our, the company that does the search for us tells us only who has to, who we have to serve, right? There's a mortgage on the property, this is the company you have to serve. We don't see the document, the mortgage document. We don't see any of that. So, we don't know the amount, or we don't, it might be a judgment creditor, but we don't see what the judgment amount is. We just see that we need to serve this individual or this entity.
And, so, and the person who's interested in purchasing this, they, they're in good standing with the city right now?
Correct. They're, from what I could tell, though, I can tell you, there is no taxes due on this property next door. It's not subject to foreclosure. They're not behind on taxes. And I think there's one other parcel that's owned by this person. No taxes are owed. Couldn't find any open code violations, so no issues on that front.
So, would it be possible to require them to consolidate the vacant parcel with his, the buyer's property? That way, it might alleviate some of the concerns about giving it back to the brother?
Yeah, I understand that. That's a good question. I've been thinking about that. I don't think we can do it in this scenario, because either the council, either the council discharged, because it's not like a property sale, where we can hold it under contract to say it has to be consolidated. This isn't that scenario. This is just, is the council going to, you know, waive the interest and discharge the, those non-tax liens? I would, I would certainly, you know, I know the attorney, obviously, and I think a lot of us may know that attorney. I would tell him this is something that, you know, we want to see happen. It makes more sense. But because it will be redeemed before the property is actually transferred, and that's a private transaction, I can't require that.
Any other thoughts, questions?
That for me, that for me is like, I mean, one of the major concerns that, I don't know, I mean, I don't have any, I think family should be, you know, help each other, but I have concerns that somehow this is going to really end up back with the person who, you know, had all these charges, had all these days.
Right. And, I'm sorry, I can just comment on that. You know, to be fair, this, to that person, that fire, that, I mean, obviously, some of these taxes go back, you know, well, actually, taxes in 2018 weren't too bad, but when that fire happened, obviously, and that fire, I believe, happened in 2018. So, they were, I think, pretty good with their taxes up until the point of fire, and then it didn't make sense, I didn't get away from them, you know, for paying taxes on property where there's no structure and it's not worth, because remember, the assessment always comes before the tax year, right? So, in 2019, when that fire happened, or, and then in 2020, it was still being, I think, seen as, a structure's still being there since it was based on the...
Previous year?
The previous year, the assessment, right? So, the 2019 assessment year impacted, obviously, the 2020 taxes, right? It's the lag that kind of happens with it. You know, so I think, in a way, this person who owns this property, 1134 Albany Street, without a structure being there, it didn't make sense, honestly, I think, for that person to, you know, "I'm going to pay the city $57,000 for the emergency demo. I don't have, one, I don't have the funds to pay that amount. I'll just lose it in foreclosure." You know, it's, it's difficult, right? As I, and then, you know, to be, to be honest, I think of what happens on the back end if the city takes this in foreclosure. Chances are, we're going to try to sell it to an adjacent property owner.
Yeah.
And it could be there, it could be the other side, or it could be somebody else who, you know, seeks out variants, because they actually want to build there. It's possible, has happened before, and, you know, sometimes they can get the variants. As I said, this is a very unique circumstance in that, you know, this person would still have to pay the six, over $16,000 to redeem the property. It's a property that, you know, would be difficult for the city to sell from within $5,000, so.
I just want to say that I think that, I hear the concerns, but it seems to me like, I wonder if the person currently is the owner, the brother, or the person who would be giving us the over $16,000, would even want the property back? I mean, it sounds like he's disregarded it for this, this many years, this few years, I should say. But, I feel like it's almost like a bird in the hand kind of situation, where I agree that we're going to get, if we get over $16,000 for this, to me, that's a windfall versus, you know, what we could possibly sell it for realistically. So, I know I'm not on the committee, but I, I would be in favor of us moving forward with the recommendation as presented.
Any other questions, Thomas, on this?
Motion to adjourn. To waive the non-tax lien, waive the interest on the taxes, and waive the interest on the non-tax lien.
Exactly. So, what is it about him?
$16,000.
Right. To discharge the non-tax liens from 2019 and 2020 respectively, and waive the interest on 2018 through 2021, non-tax liens and tax liens, as applied to 1134 Albany Street. So, it's getting rid of all interest. So, the only thing that would be remaining is the principal of the tax liens.
Despite the fact that, like, was the payment, I'll move it, but the $16,224.08?
That has to be paid. City council cannot act to get rid of tax liens.
Okay.
I'll second.
Very reluctantly.
This is a common, we don't want to touch it.
Yes, very unique situation.
It's unique, it's unique, but if we're going to get more in this way, then...
Yeah, that's not important. We have to get more.
Okay.
Yes, all in favor?
Aye. Motion to adjourn?
Pass.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Call to Order Finance, and the first item is a reminder for the home ARP, the Arpa Allocation Plan, for the home consortium. As a reminder, the public hearing should be held on the January 9th, that's next Monday. The next item is the application for restoring, we are around seven grants, we had a public hearing in 12/27. Are there any comments regarding this? Seeing that, may I have a motion?
Just a reminder, I believe.
No, I think, yes, this is, we just did it.
All in favor? The next item is update ARPA allocation, Ms. Porterfield?
Thank you. So, Mr. Toldo, do you have anything that you...
Sure, I didn't speak to a couple of substantive items going on here. So, the law department sent out a draft agreement to various departments to get input on the, you know, the, excuse me, the agreements that are ready to go out. Those were, there aren't any contingencies, those are strictly programmatic. We got some feedback from the development department. The draft agreements were modified today. It went back over to the development department this afternoon. Development department, I believe we're going to move, I know they have very few developments here, I believe we're going to move ahead and get those draft agreements out in the next day or two, to those organizations, so that they can review it. One of the things that did go out a while back, is probably a month ago, there was a letter that went out to those organizations that were appropriated funds for, for the There, as part of that, there was a checklist that was, I think, sent with the letter, requesting certain documentation, so we could have things in hand and be ready to go, even for those organizations that had contingencies related to, you know, raising other funds, that they, you know, once they got the funds in place, we would already have the other documentation we needed, so we can just kind of, you know, enter into contract. My understanding is, some organizations have provided us with all the documentation, so it'll be easier for us to enter into those agreements sooner rather than later, particularly those that don't have contingencies. Some of them have not submitted their documentation that was requested. I believe Mr. Gray from the development department could speak a bit more to those documents. Otherwise, I know, there was a question related to what funds had to be, or what contingencies existed, particularly those funds that had to be raised by certain organizations in order to, you know, essentially get the other funding from the city. I don't know what, if the council has received anything on that, has...
Yes, so what, what Ms. Mike, who is provided to every council member, is actually a copy of the resolution, and within the resolution, as you read through the resolves, it tells you, you know, what the contingencies are. So, we are working on putting it into a spreadsheet format for, for Mr. Patrick Atch, that's the last time. So, the information is there, just have to read through the...
And that's one of the resolutions. The other resolution did not mention the contingencies. It just said that the council appropriated the funds and authorized contracts with non-contingency organizations, but we could obviously go in and fill in the blanks in terms of what the contingencies are for those organizations that do have them. With that, I don't know if we'd like Mr. Gray to speak to...
Mr. Gray?
I would just add to the first resolution that we passed with regards to the force of allocation. Patrick could ask, but, you know, there's two organizations that have contingency with the deeds on the course of the resolution. The second resolution, this one has dates one year from the award. So, we'll have to amend the next cycle for these two organizations to add the one year.
Didn't we do that at our last committee meeting?
No, we didn't. We held it because we wanted a list of all the project with contingencies.
Right.
So, we have that on it, so. So, we'll put it in Excel format and just distribute it across.
Okay. This, this does it for me.
Oh, does that's for you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Gray?
So, we'll keep it in Excel.
So, I guess you're looking to have some updates on where we stand with the ARPA funding. As Andrew pointed out, you know, we sent out letters, the mayor's office sent out letters with a list of different things we were looking to get prior to entering contract. Those things were primarily related around policies and procedures and internal controls within organizations. This is federal money, so Part II, CFR 200, kind of dictates what is required of agencies to have internal controls, and how they procure contracts, and things like that. So, we asked for the policies and procedures around that. You know, there's, there's federal regulations around anti-discrimination laws. We asked the agencies to provide that information as well. And then, you know, some agencies got the amount of money they requested, some agencies got less, so we asked for updated scopes of work. Any agency that was looking for more of a kind of construction-related things, like the Carver Community Center, for example, we're looking to get the actual construction documents, budget. A lot of these agencies, when they applied for the funding, they didn't necessarily have all those things in place, so we were trying to look to collect kind of all that information prior to, you know, entering the agreement, or at least entering a conversation about those things prior to entering the agreement. Questions related to that?
So, that's going on right now, and you took, what is, do you always ask for a time frame? Do you have a time frame?
So, there's, there's a couple of agencies that have submitted everything. Most are working to pull it all together. Different groups are at different stages. I can't speak off the top of my head at this point in time, who stands where, but, you know, as we get the paperwork in and the information in, we'll certainly work and get the contracts out of the law department, send over a draft agreement today.
Okay.
And nothing should prevent the draft agreement for going out now to, again, we waited for feedback from the development department, went to another department as well. We took that feedback, built it into the agreement, and for those, as I said, for those organizations that are providing programming and not construction, and that don't have contingencies, the contracts are ready to go out, they should be going out, I would imagine, you know, as I said, tomorrow and the day after, so that, you know, and they've already submitted those documents that they needed to submit. As Mr. Gray indicated, the internal controls are important, because we're dealing with federal funding. One of the documents that we looked to receive was the audits, the last audit from those organizations. Some of them obviously have them, because they're larger organizations, that's something that they do in their normal scope of work. Some organizations don't have audits. They haven't done an audit recently, at least an independent audit, so we're working with those organizations to try to figure out how they can get, you know, fulfill those requirements. That's kind of a lift for certain organizations.
Any other questions regarding this?
No, so in two weeks, we're going to, so in two weeks, we're going to bring it back, but we want, we want to have the spreadsheet and kind of where we are, so it's like one more concise document.
So, that will include, then, then we'll be able to talk about just putting the one-year thing on?
Right.
On the two agencies?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, please.
So, I think it's appropriate to identify the projects that haven't been selected. Would it be appropriate now to speak towards how we inform any projects that are still not receiving funding, either letting them know where they currently stand with us as council members? I am not trying to distribute more work to our city, city officials, but I think it is long overdue for the community that is waiting to at least gain an update in some form or fashion as to why the project has not been selected, or ways and mechanisms to correct some gaps, so that you do receive further consideration, or we should anticipate hearing more stances from programs that haven't been selected coming to our council meetings.
I can say that a number, I don't know... I can say that a number, I don't know which ones have and which ones haven't, but, you know, most agencies that were anticipating and putting applications did look and follow closely on where the process stood with the city council, were aware of the resolutions that were passed. And there were a number of agencies that reached out and inquired about whether they had been funded or not. We did inform those agencies that at this point in time, they had not been selected. Not that it wouldn't be possible in the future, but at this point in time, that they had, they had not been, did not receive funding.
Go ahead, please.
I would say I appreciate the work that the plan of our has done. On behalf of the council, I truly think that this is a narrative that our council needs to bring forward to the city. And I don't think we can rely on the city to do or speak for us, because it's literally our responsibility.
So, Mr. Gray, generally speaking, like when we do CDBG, and people submit an application and they're not funded, is there a process that you tell the people who don't get funding? Do you normally do that?
Yeah, we usually let people know that they haven't funded. CBG, it's generally not many organizations. Usually there's, and if they see the budget, because we have public comment periods, we have 30-day public hearings, we do all that stuff. So generally they, they are aware, but we do send out letters too.
Any other questions?
I think that's a discussion that we would have with the mayor's office in term of having staff send that out. We can't tell the staff to do that or not to do that.
But don't we wanna wait until the final allocation? Do we still have some funding that needs to be allocated, and then do the final letter? I'm just writing that out.
Or do we formally do what, what Mr. Gray said, that we just say, you know, you haven't funded at this point? So there's just like at least a blanket letter? Since, I only know one, I know several agencies have reached out, but I only know that one that came to the council so far. So a council needing to advocate for, for their project. Although that particular organization asked for funding for the project, but the building that they wanted to be in wasn't even, they won't be able to use the building because the building needs to be up to code. So that's something else that would have been another cost. So. Mayor, is that something open to having just a general letter sent out to the projects that weren't funded at this point?
We can do that.
And then people will be notified, because that was just a question. So, thank you.
Go ahead.
I just have, this is sort of a, sort of a technical question around, for agencies that, whether it's CDBG or this, or, I mean, does your office provide some sort of, you know, technical assistance in terms of, you know, maybe other funding sources that might be open to those? Or gee, you know, here's, here's something that you might wanna tweak, or here's something in terms of planning the project that, you know, might, might help you assess funds from other private sources? I'm just curious about that.
Generally, we don't, we haven't really advocated for private sources. You know, there's, there's sometimes grants that come up that are rare, that we maybe suggest people look at. But, you know, generally been viewed as kind of outside our scope. It's kind of, can be kind of difficult to speak for other agencies. We certainly provide technical assistance for agencies when they apply to us, and we don't necessarily fund them.
Yeah.
And we provide them guidance of maybe how to, you know, get funding in the future for our funding. But, and it's an ongoing technical assistance for many agencies about how to manage federal funding on whole.
Right.
It's not easy at any level. A lot of times the paperwork and the burden of it is overly cumbersome for small agencies. And it's just, that's the unfortunate nature of the beast.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's federal money. So, and we are, we're fiscally held accountable for the decisions they make.
Sure.
So if they make a mistake, then we could potentially be in a position where we would have to return the money out of either grant funds or sometimes general funds to the federal government.
Gotcha.
Go ahead.
And then just so unclear, I wasn't necessarily asking or suggesting that we send out a notice to individuals that weren't allocated. It was more or less giving programs that weren't selected an update on why you weren't selected, or ways to improve your status with... If that's not something I'd do, I wouldn't want to waste anything.
Generally speaking, that we don't usually say, here's how you can improve your application and, you know, it's just... I mean, that, and let's just, just, just look at it, that's like a huge lift.
Yeah.
For the staff to say, okay, we reviewed it, this shows that, and here's, here's where you didn't do well. So that, that's a lot to ask of them.
No, I know. I guess if, if it is that there's a broad range of, of agencies and a broad range of the professionals in those agencies, I guess, I basically was taught early on that if somebody did not give me a grant, that I should call and say, gee, are there ways that I can improve my application? So I put that out there to the public, just that, you know, that's just a good thing to do, whether it's a public source or a private source. If you do get rejected for a grant, it's, it's a good idea to try to follow up. Just as if we were applying for a job and we get rejected from the job, it might be a good thing to call and say, hey, is there something on my resume or in my interviewing skills that might need improvement? I'm just, I know it's a lot to ask.
That's, that's a lot easier of an approach than to reach out and take the proactive approach to dissect every application that wasn't funded and try to figure out why it didn't happen. If somebody reaches out to us and asks us...
Right, that's all I'm saying. Yeah.
And, and, you know, that's, that would be the better approach.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you. So we'll have to talk in two weeks?
Yes, please.
Say your prayers, okay.
Thank you.
The next item is the mayor's improvement fund. Mr. Terrari?
Madam Council, Madam President, we were drawn to number four, number five tonight until we have more details and things that we get to you, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any other business for finance?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye.
Call to order city development planning. We have five items on the agenda. The first item is to authorize the mayor to enter into a supplemental agreement number three with the New York State Department of Transportation for Knott Street, Rosa Road to Wendell Avenue paving. I said Mr. Wallen, but I don't see him in the room, so.
Here comes.
Mr. Wallen asked me to discuss this with you tonight. Good evening. So some of the background information, the city is connected to apply for and receive federal funding to replace the existing traffic signal of the Knott Street and Rosa Road and Wendell Avenue intersection. During the construction phase, there was additional work, time, and materials that were required, which in total, the additional costs for construction inspection increased $180,580. Ninety-five percent of the cost is covered by federal and state funding, which is $171,551. Five percent is the city portion of $9,029. We recommend the city council authorize the mayor to enter into the supplemental agreement number three with the New York State Department of Transportation, NYS DOT.
Oh, thanks. So just to be clear, we have to pay the $9,029?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll move in.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Item number two is just a reminder for the amendments and zoning code regarding banking facilities and private clubs or lodges. And the public hearing will be held on January 9th, next Monday. And item number three is also a reminder of a public hearing for applying the overlay historic district zoning to 308 State Street. And that public hearing will be heard, will be had on January 9th, 2023. Next item on the agenda is item number four, revised parcel for the sale of 1156 Hildebrandt Avenue. So just to be clear, we're just revising this. These aren't property sales, so we're just, so it does not need to go into executive session. Mr. Gray?
Yes, please. Thank you. Good evening. The first item is to, the original resolution number 2017-250 to sell 1151 Hildebrandt Avenue and 18 Wasteland Street to Lockman for the sum of $12,500. There was an update to one of the parcel numbers for those properties. The update or the new resolution should reflect the SBL number for 1151 Hildebrandt Avenue as 49.34-2-18.1 and 18 Wasteland Street as 49.34-2-8.12.
Any questions? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number five, revised parcel for the sale of 1151 Hildebrandt Avenue. Will you do a reverse order? 1156 Hildebrandt Avenue?
1156.
1156 Hildebrandt Avenue.
The original resolution number 2017-261 to sell 1156 Hildebrandt Avenue to Govind Jarnoth Lockman for the sum of $20,000. The updated parcel number should reflect as 49.34-2-8.1.
Questions? Untold motion?
So...
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anything else to come before city development planning? Not, say, motion to adjourn?
So...
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening.